All right, this is minutes.
Oh, there was a copy. There's enough copies for everyone.
I'm gonna get enough water if I can just sit.
Yes.
All right.
You don't have one of these?
No.
Let's call the meeting to order. You guys ready?
I'll call the roll. Member Angela Berry?
Here.
Brenda Bonacera?
Here.
Luke Fudon?
Yes.
And Doug Prescott?
Here.
City manager Kyle Reeffler?
Here.
And city attorney Randy Moore?
Present. Are we recording, Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I mean, clerk.
I mean, you can read.
We already approved the January 19th.
Yeah, this would be the February 19th.
We approved in January 15th.
Yes, that's the minutes from the February 19th meeting where we approved the January minutes.
Did you send us this much hits?
Mm-hmm.
I didn't see it. All right. So we got approved minutes next, right?
Mm-hmm.
Here you go. I just figured you're going to want the two meetings together since we're pretty finished. Anybody want to motion approve the minutes?
I make a motion chip through.
Yeah.
Likewise.
All approved?
All approved.
Yes. Yes.
My thing is, can you bring us up to speed? What would that be?
Yes. So what I have is from page 39 to 74. I believe we got all the way up to... We talked about docks slightly, then we jumped back to the height code because we had the shoe clothes.
We went through the docks pretty thorough, I thought. We think for me, yeah, we went through the gap between them and then we went through the floating docks and we came up with...
We talked about the setbacks, we talked about floating, yeah.
No, we wouldn't. I think so, no, no subject of that.
And then I jumped back to the height code, so that's sort of like the...
With the, uh, 14th Street.
And I did get an update from the shoe clothes after that meeting, just so that you guys... So, um, you know, hello Kyle, thank you for allowing me an immediate attention of our meeting, giving us the opportunity to request potential code changes to allow variance, to allow variance applications. I appreciate that the members listened carefully to my explanation, but I also recognize their concerns and reservations upon making changes. We had hoped to raise at home enough to future proof if a decade storm surges. However, after attending the meeting, I realize it may be difficult to persuade the board to amend the code. Our immediate priority is to elevate our home before hurricane season. Our contractor and structural engineers have informed me that the minimum height is measured from the VFE plus one foot. The design calculations indicate we could achieve a reasonable lift under the current rules. Although it will not be as high as we originally wanted, it will still be an improved, it will still improve our home's safety very much. Therefore, we will discontinue our efforts to obtain a variance and proceed under the existing code requirements. The structural engineers, architects, and contractor are finalizing their calculations. They expect us to do the final drawings for a permit in about 10 days. We are grateful for the guidance so far and kind of receiving its assistance provided in expediting the permit application to the SDC. So they're saying that, you know, they discovered that they don't need any changes.
Get the onetime.
Yes. So I just want to look at that. Okay, so page 39 to 74.
Yeah, we started on like the hedges and...
Yes, that's what I want to start copying. So we, we have code for hedges and our current code, which was last updated...
It's over here.
I believe it was 2020, I don't know when it was, but it, um, we, we went from a hedge being allowed at a height of six feet maximum to allowing a hedge to grow up to eight feet maximum. So that was a change that we made, I believe it was 2020. So let me kind of show you on the diagram. So if we take this being just a lot and we'll treat this as if it's a, you know, a not, not water lot. It's land based, you have a neighbor directly behind, neighbors left and right. Typically, um, when you're on this type of lot, you know, you have a side setback, it's usually either seven to 10 feet. So setback definition means that you can't have any, um, any structure or building within that space for the property line. Whatever that setback is, that's where you have to place your building. Rear setbacks on a non waterfront lot, typically seven feet, sometimes a little more. That's measured from the back property line. And then every, every lot in the city has a front setback of 25 feet. So no matter where you are, that's something you know is 25 feet. So when I say front setback, you have your lot, so you have your actual property that is owned. And the front setback is from that front property line 25 feet back is where you have to start, um, you know, start your building. And then when we're talking about hedges, that means that 25 feet back from that front property line is where the, you're technically in that front setback. So when I speak of hedges currently, you can grow hedges up to eight feet on this interior lot of the city. On the side property lines, on the rear property line. So if you have definition of a hedge, like multiply, I don't know the exact definition, but multiple growing plants near each other form a hedge. You know, you can grow up to eight feet in this area. When you get up to that front setback area, so anywhere forward of usually where the building is built, the maximum height you're, you're allowed right now is up to three feet for a hedge. You're not allowed to have a fence or landscaping wall go further into the front setback. So if you had a fence, you could have, it could be six feet maximum and it could go around the perimeter, but you would have to have a gate here and a gate here. Where the hedge, you have a little bit of the option of coming forward of that front building line or into the front setback and letting it grow up to three feet. The reason I'm bringing this up is because you have a lot of lots throughout the city, especially when you're talking about front setback that have allowed hedges to grow over a three foot in height. Most of them tend to be closer to five to six feet. I wouldn't say any as high as eight, but to me, this is something, right now, we have a lot of properties that are not conforming when it comes to this rule. And what I'm trying to find is some kind of medium adjustment to the rule to get more people who have something similar to growth hedges in the front that, that will allow them to keep it at a reasonable height, but it is within reason that's not, you know, I guess I'm saying like, it's not so strict that like, we're going to have to go and code violation like 50% of houses for having hedges that have exceeded three feet in height in the front setback. So something, I brought up in our first work session with city council was the idea of raising the maximum height in the front setback. I think I threw out six feet, which the reaction was some were okay, most were, thought that was a little too high. Thought that would a six foot hedge coming up to the front property line, it'll enclose these properties and will be as open a look for these new roads. Another idea in talking to one of the residents who had a hedge, so they were technically a resident that was not conforming, but the floodwaters killed their hedge, which went out in front of their house. And it went about, let's say 10 feet, and it was probably like a, like a four to five foot hedge. So it, it didn't extend all the way out 25 feet to their property line, but it extended out past the front of the house and provided some form of privacy. So in discussing this, I explained that technically planting back hedges or building a wall is not informing to the code. But it did give me the idea that possibly we allow a higher than three foot hedge to go so many feet encroaching to the front setback. So that is something I'd want to propose, get you your ideas on and your feedback of what, what do you think we could adjust.
Can we go to the street now at, at the three feet?
So, no, you can only go to the front part. Typically, 10 to 15 feet is your right away from to the edge of the road to where the property starts on most lots.
Then you get your setback and go back.
Yes.
I would always suggest, my son was actually one of these guys who talked about that big pile that killed his hedge because it was funny, feet right as far as it could go. Is it's where you're backing out your driveway, you have visibility to see what's coming. And so I don't know how many times I came close to getting hit coming down this driveway. So anyways, I've cut it back to whatever, four feet, I think, in height, so you can at least see it as you're backing up.
Okay.
Now, I don't know if you have to go all the way up to the 25 feet to do that, but maybe have a different stage. But when you get the, the closer to the street, I think the max would be four feet.
Max would be four. Okay.
Then what else?
I, I agree with that, but I'd take it back down to three.
Keep it at three?
I'd keep it at three and, and that way visibility over a three foot hedge, people can see when they're backing out. Children, bikes, golf courts.
Yeah.
Take it back and just, you know, send, send a note to out everybody that this is a new...
Yeah, I don't think you need to bring all the way up to the, to the set, to the, the house, where the house is at, but you bring it up to like maybe first 15 with a, with a car that has visibility and they're looking at that one.
Right. If you keep it at three, people will go to four and then five.
Yeah.
Three. My goal is I want to kind of add a number that I can enforce. So I'm trying to get it where I don't have people at four and five in areas that they should be three. So in, you know, looking through the code and revising it, I'm just trying to get something different that's more enforceable. Unless we're, we really want to make a hard stance and enforce what we currently have, but that is going to be significant.
Does this apply if your face, if your property faces Gulf Boulevard?
No, it does not. If you, if you read the, the section on fences and hedges, Gulf Boulevard, so any county right away, Gulf Boulevard, Causeway Boulevard, or any public property, so if it's up against a park, then you're allowed to have a six foot fence. You're allowed to grow your hedges to a maximum height. So that's why you'll see, like, C-Birds on Gulf Boulevard, they're like 15 feet. And you're allowed to have a, you can have a wall on the front, up to the front setback wall line of six feet on a county. So there is exceptions. So yeah, so currently, our current rule, and it's not going to change the right away, is the right away. You're not supposed to be growing hedges, blocking views, all that. So when we talk about the three feet, we're talking about from the front, 25 feet, and then it would stop. So just, just, would anyone consider a higher limit, so maybe only 10 feet in? Which I don't think is going to cause a visibility issue. Given that you have to at least be 25 feet from the property line. So you've got at least 15 feet till you get to the end of the property line, and then you have whatever right away exists.
That sounds reasonable.
Yeah.
Okay. That to me, it, in my mind, provides a little bit of that privacy to the neighbor, but isn't at the extreme of taking away that openness and view.
Instead, I think it would be nice to.
Yeah. Okay.
Can you just restate that so we're clear if that's the consensus?
Yes, so...
Yeah, I should be a little bit.
So let's go back to 94 dash 251, fences, walls, and hedges. And if you'll see on this, this version, number two, you go halfway in the paragraph, so we have a hedge may be grown in the front setback area of a residential property, but shall not exceed, and there was three crossed out, the underline, six feet in height. So the, what the consensus I'm looking for is that we reword this to define you're allowed to grow a higher hedge. And what, within the first 10 feet, encroach the front setback by 10 feet with a higher hedge. And what nu, what number do we agree on?
So the first 10 feet, you want it to be whatever, a lower number, and then after 10 feet, where, how high can we be?
So the first 10 feet, I want to be a little higher to allow privacy. So from the house, 10 feet going towards the road. And then after that, drop it to three feet to the front property, and then you have the right away.
So for the second height, what height would that be exactly, eight?
So you'd be eight feet to the front of the house, and then for 10 more feet, somewhere between four and six, and then down to three.
I'd say six.
Six, okay. Anyone else?
Ooh, that sounds good.
Yeah. Okay. Um, okay. Does that, everyone have a clear understanding?
Yeah, my only thing was the safety, that was the main thing.
And we did, and I'll bring up, we'll get a little later, we did add more language about the line of sight for backing out of driveways. So, um, we already changed the code for growing over the, um, the edge of the seawall. So there, you're, you're now allowed to extend a fence or a hedge to grow over the seawall cap, but not extend past it. That was a change we made. It was on the residential median properties, the multifamily, most of those had already done it to prevent people from walking on the seawalls. And then it was also an issue for people with dogs on residential waterfront lots, to extend it to allow that the animals can't cross in other people's yards.
Now, what about people that have waterfront property and, and your neighbors are planting trees and now you're obstructing their, their view?
No right to a view across your neighbor's property legally.
Sorry?
You have no right to a view across your neighbor's property, or even laterally outside, like if you're like, well, bye. I used to be able to see out in the waterway this way, and now that person has constructed a pagoda and I can't see the sunset the same way, three doors out. But you have no legal right to that view.
So we do have a rule in our, in this section that is from the inside edge of the seawall back 12 feet on the side property line, that there's, your, your fence or your hedge has to be at a height of four feet until you get 12 feet back from the inside edge of that seawall. And then it goes up to the whole eight if it's an hedge, or six if the wall or fence. So that's the rule. If somebody has something else that is not a specific code in their yard that locks your view, that, that, there's no right to, you know, what, what is blocking.
So if somebody has palm trees all the way up to the edge, is that, is that, is that considered a hedge?
Well, that's where you got to figure out the def, if it, if it's defined as a, as a hedge. The idea when we talked about the definition, um...
Was to preserve... So there is no right easement, no view right easements at all for what people that are on waterfront?
Correct. You have no right of view across your neighbor's lot.
Like I used to call it vista right?
Yeah, there's not, there's no vista right, if you, to use that parlance, there's no vista right. In Florida law, there's, you know, absent things like, we may, we may choose to regulate hedges and things that create, you know, an obstructed view in the form of like, you know, you do have that in a lot of beach communities that, okay, you can't let your hedge get to 15 feet or get like a, you know, like you see in Miami Beach, these properties that have 30 feet hedges as privacy walls. That's regulated that way, but for example, if tomorrow your neighbor built a mother-in-law suite in the back that conformed to all the setbacks and everything else and all the high requirements, but that was how I used to see the sunset, that's directly in the line. You have no, no right to that. That's their property and they get to use it as they wish, within the boundaries of the land development code, comp plan, et cetera.
Okay.
And a lot of the, if you go back to that question about a hedge, hedge means two or more closely and densely growing bushes or shrubs along a property or boundary line that create, generally obstructs a person's view through it. And then, like I said, for the purposes of definition, any vegetation such as bamboo or arugula palms are considered a hedge when planted or grown in rows or clusters in a manner that creates an opaque barrier at a height of eight feet above the existing grade. So we're in situations that you have few trunks that really is not obstructing anything, we're allowing. But if you have a dense cluster of these bamboo or arugula palms that, you know, you can't see through, then for that ground height to eight feet height, then that's where we're saying that there would be a problem. But we're trying to, within the situation where you have these arugulas grown on the back property line, and they're not that thick, there may be four trunks, you're not looking at something that's completely blocking a view within that area.
Is this more of a complaint driven?
This is more of my experience in, in receiving complaints or going onto a property to examine where there could be a violation and then observing other things and try to determine what, what is in violation and what is not.
Said differently from, for, for Kyle's sake, because he's always so diplomatic, what happens with things like this and the hedges in the front is somebody reads the code, somebody who's not having great relationship with their neighbor, reads the code and says, hey, I've read your code and he's got three or four palm trees, or he's got, you know, two fir trees in the back. And that person says, oh, I've got two fir trees? And they drive around or they get on, you know, get on their boat or whatever, and they say, well, I'm one, you got 38 you're going to have to deal with. And then Kyle's put in the weird position of, yes, our code says this, and yes, I should enforce it. However, if I'm going to enforce it, I need to enforce it equally. And now a bunch of residents have, are maybe, if we choose to really go by the letter of what we have here, subject to enforcement on something that the community doesn't seem particularly concerned about. It's been happening for time memorial, but now this one conflict becomes an inflection point. And so what Kyle's trying to do is, is avoid, like, if we're going to have these restrictions, any, whatever they may be, that we have them and they're not there for the sake of signaling a virtue, but rather understand like, if this is what it's going to be, then there is possible I may have to enforce it, that the city staff, whoever, whether it be Kyle's successor or whomever, and that may mean a functional change to the way things have looked a very long time. And trees that you've had in your backyard, I don't know any of your property lots, but, you know, may actually already be in violation of what this says. At the risk of speaking for you, Kyle, I think that's, that's, you know...
In my street, the neighbors, we all like to have it, you know, it's like, that's why I say it is complaint driven because we're kind of all in, everybody's up. And we prefer it, so you're not looking on each other's house, you know, pool area. But as I say, if each neighbor is a bit cold, then I may just wait for the complaint to, you know, be driven and then deal with it, but I understand what we're doing.
Yeah, the four of you are fine, and then somebody comes over from one or the other, retunders and says, I drove to that block, and every single one of them's got it. So if you're citing me, I want one, two, three, four, five, I want to see all their cases.
Kind of a six to that happen as the other there, but I know when you first pass these things, you do have that one neighbor that pops up every 10 years. You're going to have the issue, you're going to have to go back to normal and get everything what they want, but until it's, you know, I have one next to me. I don't know how to, I, I like the idea of you, the man, specifically my neighbor to my right, I would love to keep that wall up there because I don't really want to look that way. But the one to the left, that's the open water, so I'm going to have them kept theirs, but...
Yeah.
I don't, I don't really understand that, that just come up with a, a fair rule, maybe how far back you can go.
We're talking about the rarely property?
Yeah.
So yeah, right now, it's inside edge of the seawall, 12 feet back, has to be at a four foot height if it's a fence wall density, a shred, a hedge, something that blocks view.
That's the way it is currently down there?
That's where it currently is.
I would say the way it is.
We measure directly down it, from the height to whatever the grade is.
I was expecting you.
I don't know. I mean, there's no hedges.
But it depends what you call it.
Well, he just read.
Okay. I'm taking up your property, you have a wall and nothing that's defined as a hedge. Typically, the most common hedges are like the potocarpus.
Yeah, so one of my neighbors has a massive, I don't know what kind, is it a Christmas tree?
Oh, it's a combination of...
Yeah, it's, it's huge, but...
If it's one plant and it's grown, I'm going to check these.
That's not a hedge, but it's just massive. It takes up almost the whole backyard, so...
But that's part of the reason too, when we get later, we're talking about line of sight and backing out of driveway. We define it more so with just something blocking of view, so that we're not trying to figure out this is a hedge or not.
Right. I agree that that's dangerous to have that deck, so, yeah.
Okay. Um, I, another, um, number six added is, we added electrical wiring shall not be placed on the surface of a fence or wall that faces the street or adjacent property. We've discovered that some people have done their own sort of wiring, put lights on their walls. And this is to prevent exposed wiring and require that we, you know, people do it properly. We get to number 15, we also put installation of lights on a fence or wall, installer or plug-in light shall require electrical permit. So this is to make sure that they do it correctly. We've seen exposed wires with wire nuts, electrical lighting, someone stubbed themselves and we're trying to put an end to that. We have, we added on number 16, underlined, trees shall be planted no closer to three feet from the property line. This is to prevent when people plant trees too close to a property line and they obviously grow bigger. And then it starts causing a problem in the neighbor's property. A lot of times people plant trees too close to the neighbor's property line, if they have a fence, something, the roots start growing, they start pushing fences over and all that. So this is just to establish a buffer distance. Everybody going to give it up?
And that's what's currently it now?
Right now, there is, the only restriction is on waterfront lot, I have to pull up the code section, but it says waterfront lots shall be two and a half feet from the property line. So this is to add a rule that covers every property for tree planting.
Or what, if, if people grandfathered in?
They're going to have to be.
Okay.
Yeah.
It's got to be there.
Okay, so the recommendations are like a grandfathering clause?
Yeah. There's a recent tale, or, or that's a...
Let me see.
A hedge can go up to, I mean, feet? Not where the plant, the ball, root ball is, right, the way you refer to it?
Yeah. Right. So we're just trying to give enough buffer space to...
As it grows up.
Yeah. Um, so chap, or section 66 dash 32, which is under vegetation, chapter 66. That's not in our actual packet, but just for reference, um... Uh, three, okay, now 66 dash 33, it says waterfront properties, so there, there is one thing that says a waterfront properties, all trees shall be planted, all trees planted on any waterfront property shall be setback from the property line, and then when this is a three and a half feet. So it's technically a little bit more, but we didn't have anything on the regular lots.
That's a tree.
That's a tree.
And a shrub or a hedge would be two and a half.
A shrub or a hedge can be planted very close to the property line, but we do have under our landscape rules that you're not, your hedge or your tree should not encroach over your neighbor's property line.
Right, I'm just trying to practically say, if somebody's built a brand new home and there are setbacks 10 feet on either side, and they're going to put a walkway and maybe they need to put, like the homes are currently, if you start coming in halfway all the way to the house, that's going, I think that's going too far, that it could be not like too much, it'd be impractical. If I was building a home right now, I'd try to put, I'm going to put the palm trees down the side and that's a tree. So that could be very much wiping out my setbacks, so you can just...
So you think three and a half is too much?
I think you may have the width to the trunk, I think it's bigger, and you're going to be down to five feet between the house. And if you want to, like, have a little hedge on the house, you're, or you're just a little neuropath. I get it from where you're coming from, not to bother the neighbor, but the same, same joke here, you can't do anything with the side of your house this way. So I'd go back to the two and a half, maybe to the two feet or whatever the case may be. Now, what way it was before, and I don't know what's currently at, is has the same, you went with a tree, like an oak tree or something like that. Of course, it's gonna grow into the neighbor's yard, the neighbor has the right to cut them off.
They do, but our code also says that it's a violation.
To what?
To encroach.
Right, so I don't know how that.
So I have enforced that code on multiple properties.
You have?
Not every city has that, but we do have where it says that.
Right, but palm trees, it's not on, you know, of course, your palm trees are gonna be hanging into the other guy's yard.
Yeah.
So I don't think they ever care, but if they do, because they're happy little toys and.
I think it comes down to maintenance and how great your neighbors.
I'm just trying to look at the practical standpoint and how you manage that. And we have a lot of complaints as we speak with neighbors.
This is a popular one, with the encroachment of the lot, yeah.
And what hedge? What type of tree is it more specific?
Palm trees is usually the droppings with the fronds falling and they don't have them picked up, so you got your neighbors always dealing with you.
Other person. Which is she'll park her in the, you know, if you look at it all up down your street, every home's out like that.
That's true.
Yeah, so it's gonna be okay.
But this is for new planting.
Yeah.
I say for new, yeah, because we have that situation with, you know, we don't have many trees in the backyard, but we're cleaning the mess up all the time.
And this would be like a new house built when we're doing the inspection before the seal, just making sure that the trees didn't get.
Two, about two. Well, my, my two senses and stuff that they don't mean the way, but two, uh, two and a half feet versus three and a half.
So we have three, any other comments on that? We have three that we're proposing to put for all lots. You have that one, three, uh, code that says three and a half feet for waterfront properties.
But that's from the C wall back to toward the house, right?
That's from the side property.
Oh, side to side.
Side setback.
Side to side, and he's saying if you wanna put a walkway and then there's pool equipment on the side of the house, there's. What kind of hedge or trees are you gonna put in that small space? And what are we gonna allow or what is the city gonna allow? For that space? We could spend a month on that.
Most people's mechanical equipment encroaches at the four feet on the side house. So you have a seven foot setback, which is the smallest you're gonna have, and you have three feet if you might use that.
So you get four foot of setback with your mechanical, we're gonna get three and a half with the, with the tree, if you don't have nothing.
If you're like, right, a problem. And that's the worst case scenario, your seven is gonna be.
But even five and four and three and a half, we should two and a half.
But, and you still have to have a wall, right?
But if you want.
If you want a wall. But it's just getting tight.
Yeah, cause some trees also, they don't just grow this way, so, yeah, it's arugula palms, then they get like one.
That's what I'm saying, it makes sense from not still to the neighbor's yard, but overall, it's not practical.
So when we have, like, if we allow people over time, they plant these trees, say they move, they sell the house, ten years later, the trees show size and it starts affecting the neighbor's property. Typically, what we have to tell them is, you know, the, the tree is damaging their fence, but at that point, you know, we can tell, correct me if I'm wrong, but we can tell the tree is encroaching in somebody, but it's also like this becomes the civil issue. Like, it's kind of beyond.
Which we wanna prevent.
Yeah.
Yeah.
People don't like to hear that, but that's where we get to.
Yeah.
No, just.
I'm okay with that tree, it's tough.
It's not practical to build a brand new home and put it right down below your setback, so, but I get it, you wanna deal with neighbors, I got to say, what's the worst evil?
So we're talking, we have three in existence, we're recommending, sorry, three and a half in existence, we have recommended three for all lots. Is three a reasonable number if we even expand it across the waterfront property or do we?
I'm a two and a half guy.
Yeah, I'd agree with that.
I'm three or three and a half.
I'm two and a half.
Two, that's consensus, two and a half.
Okay. So we will recommend changing sixty-six dash thirty-three to two and a half for the waterfront and we'll also.
I've, I've, it's been on the top of my mind for years, but I don't know if this is the time to bring this up, but the, um, some of these people have these, on waterfront, these huge, I think they're called queen palms, but I'm not up to date on them. But they're the ones that self cleanse themselves, or the braces fall off in their own, and they're the greenhouse.
Yeah, fox tail.
And they're, well, bigger than, it's the same type of family, but they, but anyways, those type of trees. In, in, in the, my code, there's gotta be, I was, it's up on the bottom of the, the code, because they're, they're huge and weigh a lot. And they fall in into the water, cause they're so close to the door and, and then they, once in a while, they wash up on the beach at my end, but usually they, they get so waterlogged, they sit before them. And then we pull them out and it's work and drag them out to the street and so forth. But it's just what it's doing to the body, they don't, they don't go away, they don't decompose once they're on the water, they're there for, ten years later, they're still there. So it's, it's just maybe, I don't know how you're gonna enforce it, but people already have these things. But move those trees further back so they, they lay another property versus laying, cause that's a real environmental issue, it's aesthetics.
Do we wanna make a distance required for rear property?
That's not definitely a law.
Or, or do you restrict the species of the plant or the tree or, I know you're talking about king palms.
Okay, I just know that.
I have two on mine, I regret planting those.
They're like thirty feet near, maybe higher.
God, if they hit my car, the roof is gone.
Right, yeah, right, you got that, that's not like money across street, two years out, there's a, you know, fallen on his car. But anyways, just maybe all points for that matter, but I mean, trees over a certain height or something that are that close to the, maybe twenty feet or versus fifteen, I don't know where it is, if there is a code.
We don't have a current, a code currently, um, if I can ask for a recommendation from the planner.
Yeah, certainly, maybe put it out to another, talk about it.
From his experience.
But I just know that practically, you look, you look at the code every day, or you can see a, a, so half submerged, they float around out there, then it, sometimes then just you hit with your, you get over your head with your boat and whatnot, and then the beach break, but most of the time. And on low, low tide, you see a bunch of carp's up there, you're just.
Yeah, and then just.
As low as you can rise, it's an old deal.
Okay, I'll come back to something for that then. Um, twenty-one, uh, earth burns.
Oh, this is it.
Well, yeah, this is the, I don't know how this relates yet, I'll have to look at what they were recommending. But, um, we took out that they are not permitted under city code. And then we, we added language that is permitted subject to elevation grading requirements. So this is, this is just a, a change, um, because we did modify elevation grading, um, slightly. When we talked about being at twenty-four inches above the crown of the road. So this is saying, you know, you can have them if it meets the proper requirements instead of saying no burn at all.
And then, if you do write a grade at the next year, do you, uh, is there a height down?
We have no, no information.
There's a corner of my lot, there's like, I should tell you, it's on a mark, I think, but.
So as long as it's not impacting drainage negatively to anybody or any, and we're saying that you can.
Okay, I'll, I'll do it.
Well, I asked about it because that was one of the things that was brought up in this upcoming meeting about, you know, FEMA, what you can do to naturally landscape and protect your home. And so I, I know nothing about it, I mean, I just read that.
So it's like, it's like, those are using your landscape, which is a good thing.
Yeah. They, they said it was a natural way, um, but again, I don't know what it entails, it may hurt your neighbor's yard, I don't know.
If you push water ahead, yeah, it would.
Right. So that's something to consider, maybe, um, I'll take a look at that, but maybe we don't really need anything, we just need to make sure that neighbors aren't impacted. Okay, um, twenty-four, this was added, all fences, walls, hedges must comply with the roadway, roadway intersection visibility requirement of sec, section of this chapter, and that's gonna come later. Um, commercial activities, um, some language was added based on the statute, um, that allows home businesses. Um, so this is recommended by our planner. So we cross out members of the family in number one, it says home occupants are those occupy, or home occupation are those occupations carried out by, cross out member of the family in person residing in the dwelling unit. And then they accept up to, up to a total of two employees or independent contractors who do not reside in the dwelling unit, may work at the business, the business may also have an additional remote employee that does not work in the dwelling. So this is, this is language put in based on what the statute allows.
Yeah, uh, back in twenty, I wanna say twenty twenty-two, uh, the legislature preempted all municipal regulations of home-based businesses. So that you cannot prohibit home-based businesses, they, they have to be allowed, um, in all cities, uh, subject to very small limitations. And this is a recitation of those limitations about you have to have at least one person who resides there, can't have more than two employees. It goes on to say things like you can't functionally change the structure of the building to accommodate like a drive-through window, things like that. But, you know, what it, what it means in terms of, you know, in a community like yours, you're very fortunate not to have, uh, or to have regulations, enforceable regulations governing short-term rentals, so that limits some of the change in the character of your community. But as it relates to home-based businesses, a lot can be done and the argument that, well, it's a residence is, does not, is not the end of the conversation. Um, if they are meeting all of these things, it can be a residence and be a home occupation or a home-based business, um, you know, two things can be true. So, you know, your neighbor could be running a clock repair shop, a gunsmithing shop, you know, ammo supply. You know, insert a hobby or job here as long as it adheres to the very limited requirements in the statute, which we just repeat here to make sure it's clear.
Yep, so on B, um, some more language is added, uh, no person outside of media family or the owner or occupant shall be employed in the home occupation except that up to a total of two employees or independent contractors who do not reside in the dwelling until a unit may work at the business, the business may also have an additional remote employee that, that do not work in the dwelling. Incidental businesses, uses and activities may be conducted at the residential property. But the important is C, um, and we cross out sign and put exterior display. There shall be no exterior display or exterior storage of materials, nor any exterior indication of the home occupation or variation of the residential character of the dwelling. So that's important, it still needs to look like, you know, a house at some place, they're not a, it's just a building.
Or how would you enforce the two employees of that?
It'd be, it would be a challenge to prove, but we would have to do our level best, whether it's observing the property. You know, okay, on a daily basis, five cars are coming in, five people are going in, you know, whatever circumstantial evidence we can provide to establish how many people are utilizing the property, of course, they may say, oh, those three people aren't here for the business, those are just my buddies who hang out from day to day. You know, all that stuff, but, um, we would have to make that case.
It kind of regulates itself with how much bandwidth you can get sending to a home.
In theory, but as an example, I saw in another community, um, somebody used their garage as a, during the November to January period, uh, as a UPS hub and spoke area for holiday shipping. So they had their, they left their garage open for extended periods of time. And UPS would bring twenty boxes, fifty boxes, and they'd come up and they'd say, well, look at the doings, like, all it is is a car pulling in and out of the driveway, what's wrong with that? You know, and you look, there's no employee there, there's, you know, they, they reside there, there's, they, they met, they checked every box when you went down the list on what they could do and they weren't doing anything, you know, the, the UPS traffic, there wasn't a line of trucks down the street or anything, it was just one truck coming, you know, two to three times a day.
Keep the driver there and then ship it to that location, the driver.
And they use it as a hub and spoke for the, you know, distribution system. So it was one of those things where some of the neighbors were very upset, I didn't move, I didn't, you know, purchase my home to live next to a UPS depot for any amount of the year, much less two, two months, and so it's, you know, these, these kinds of, we're, we're starting to see more and more of these kinds of questions come up in communities, whether it's what we talked about last meeting, and I remember Buenos Aires wasn't here for, but we talked a little bit about um, a restriction being placed in on, on sub-leasing portions of your property, like, oh, I have, maybe you are a prolific chef and you rent out your kitchen to people on Friday nights when you and your husband go and go out dancing, you make your kitchen available to people, we're trying to prevent those kinds of things. And so, um, the same is true of, of this sort of use, you, there's, there's a lot of limits and, and truth be told, as an attorney who practices in this realm, a lot of our traditional understandings of zoning have, have largely eroded based on these kinds of preemptions.
I know a lot of people on professional levels that work at home and have two or three people, people holders, insurance.
Yeah, I mean, there's plenty of accountants and lawyers and people will do that, you know, i- i- if, if that, I think that's a use most people conceive of when they read this, but then it gets pushed, like, I was fine with an accountant or somebody with an Etsy shop selling, you know, knitted things and picture frames, but when it gets to be, it, it's always fine until it isn't, and then, but it still falls within the same category.
Something I think about with this is, uh, you know, people live on the water and they're doing some kind of boat service.
Renting their dock or?
Well, not renting.
Not renting their dock, but let's say, let's say you do charters.
They're doing charter fishing for a house, and they technically can run it.
There's a couple of.
Two people park in your driveway every morning at five AM, you let them in, just like, which you would do with your buddies all the time or your sons, friends or whatever else, same thing, except they're getting paid to do it, but the, the use of the home doesn't change, I live here, I've always kept my boat here and all that it is, is there's two people who you don't know who show up two to three times a week and come out on my boat and then they're gone by the evening and they say, well, that doesn't track any of those issues, you know, they're not, they're not putting, you know, Randy's fishing charters all, all over, all across the garage door like a rap or something, but, um, you know, that's, that's the challenge is, and so people are like, hey, I was fine with the accountant, but then when every, you know, twice a week or once a week, I hear somebody out on the dock at five AM, that's not what I was expecting.
That's, this is kind of our balancing act with the changing the code for this statute. Our planner also made a change on D, um, but this kind of goes to, you know, if they are doing things that start, uh, creating a nuisance, you know, to the words back to chapter twenty-two saying the home occupation shall be subject to nuisance provisions of chapter twenty-two. So I'm sorry if that activity is creating problems.
Is there anything about, um, because we, we had a flare up here about thirty years ago with commercial fishermen. They're, they're running their boats out in the back of the houses and swimming craft guys and all, is there anything that prevents it?
I would probably check.
Any rocks, I voted with any rocks, but I'm gonna note that I had one pop up next to me with my first plot ninety-seven and again, okay, it was a Uber, online Uber. Pulled it right in and unloaded a dropper and they picked it up the way you went.
I don't know, I would probably check.
I mean, the feller needs to restrict that.
We don't have anything that says.
If it pops up.
It's one of those things that would fall under a home base, but I mean, that's the exact example I was starting to give is.
That's what made me think of it.
Yeah.
I brought it back.
There's, there's not much we can do about that, um, if, if they're checking all these other boxes.
What rule, you say the six number on the side of the boat, that's a commercial number.
It used to be, yeah, it used to be the rule.
Get it out of here.
Yeah.
All right, well.
The origin, there are new sums in me.
Okay, well, um, just keep moving down, I E, L sign shall be subject to standards and requirements, chapter eighty-six, our sign code is not complete, it's still under work. The home occupation may not conduct retail transactions at a structure other than the residential dwelling, so, well, they can't put another structure out there, it's, it's all important. External modifications made to the residence dwelling to accommodate a home occupation must conform to the residential character and architectural aesthetics of the neighborhood. Parking shall be subject to the standards and requirements of section thirty, uh, under section two, so we get a follow parking laws. And then we crossed out some of the other detailed restrictions, but, um, you know, revert back to our chapter part two to kind of, anything we're adding is nuisance conditions that this business or whatever can create that. Okay. Chapter, oh, sorry, page forty-four seventy-four, this is another, uh, set fee in the code that we are just changing language to establish our resolution, this is the council. Again, the idea is to update fees. Again, the idea is to update fees as one general resolution as needed. Roadway, driveway, intersection visibility, so this is where I was talking about with backing, how about the driveway? This, some language that was also found in chapter fifty, street sidewalks and public, other public ways got moved here. This is a better location for covering this, because we are talking about, you know, hedges and all that. So to minimize traffic hazards at street, road, or driveway intersections, no structure or landscape shall be erected, installed, or maintained. And then it used to be what obstructs the view of a motorist at an intersection within the city at a level that exceeds thirty inches in height. But it would read, shall be installed or maintained that obstructs visibility between two and a half feet and ten feet above the centerline of the grade of the intersecting streets or driveway within the triangle described in this section. So it's saying, instead of just saying thirty inches, which is the two and a half feet, it's saying up to, two and a half to ten feet. So if you say you have a palm tree that's closer to the road, but it's growing, you know, high and all about ten feet, but not blatantly obstructing anyone's view, then we're trying to leave room for that in the code. So that's why we pick that site window in the language. B says the areas of the property located at the corner formed by the intersection of two or more public streets or roadways or at the intersection of a street or roadway with a driveway or two sides of the triangle area being measured twenty-five feet in length along the abutting edge of the roadway or driveway forming the sides or lengths of the triangle from that point of intersection to the third line being the hypotenuse connecting the ends to the other two sidelines. So, in a lot of words, it's, you know, you're doing twenty-five feet from each, and you're creating that hypotenuse on that site triangle to make sure that on the corner you can see across, clear line of sight when you're making that turn. That's kind of a standard wording that you'll find in a lot of code. Again, it got moved from another part of our code to be included. No fence, planting, wall, or other structures shall be erected, constructed, installed, or maintained within six feet of a fire hydrant or other emergency apparatus. I think the count is three and a half feet, we have a little bit more. I just want to feel out, are we good with six feet, we like the six feet of clearance. You'll see fire hydrants typically between a hundred and three hundred feet down the roads, just depending on what street. In some situations, people have hedges near them, this would be to back off anything.
So, what was the count, is it nine and a half, or do you wanna make it six?
So, we're not changing it, it's been six.
It's been six.
Yes.
And is it, is it maintained at six now?
It is, to my knowledge, it's six feet.
No problem there.
I think it's a good thing to be, maybe more distant, just because of Miller Beach or Miller Community, we don't have as many as a newer community as far as spacing of fire hydrants, so it's probably better that they're more visible. So the dogs are probably. And then D, no fence, planting, or other structures shall be erected, constructed, installed, maintained that obstructs visibility between two and a half feet and ten feet above the centerline grade of the intersecting streets or driveway within the triangle described in this section. More code to prevent that obstruction. Coastal control line, this came, they moved it from chapter ten, thought it'd fit better here. Coastal construction control line. This is a line that is, exists on the Gulf of Mexico property that anything, if you're doing anything westward of the, or seaward of the coastal construction, coastal construction control line, you need, you're required to have a permit by FDEP. So it's just kinda how they define that area, so that if you, if you're in it, that you know that there's an environmental permit required. We moved all of swimming pools, hot tubs, and spas into chapter ninety-four, back in chapter ten as well. These are all underlined because they've been, they've been moved, but the change is on page forty-seven to seventy-four, section ninety-four dash two ninety-three, setbacks, heights, and whis, under G. And this was a code. It used to be set at eighteen inches. So what it reads is the height of a swimming pool shall be no higher, and we're changing, we wanna change it to twenty-four inches above the crown of the road. Any structural part of a permanently installed in-ground swimming pool or spa shall not be built higher than twenty-four inches above the pool deck, including raised spas, raised pool, beams, upper level decks, raised waterfalls, auxiliary. Auxiliary deck mounted equipment such as handrails, ladders, grab rails, diving boards, and slides should not be subject to a height limitation, so force this section.
What's the exemptions?
Like a slide, ladder, grab rails.
Okay.
Yeah, so it was eighteen.
What, what's their, why, what's the reasoning there is a height restriction?
So, I, I don't know if I have the words. It was probably.
I may go a little further with that, I have to say, so I won't be misleading. I've followed this, what goes on here for a long time, and it's almost every damn pool we put in this city, you gotta get variance of some sort, and I don't know why. All right, so, so why, why have, why setting people up for variance when some of it, and they, most of them, they call it a pool builder, they usually get the variance, and so why, why, why do you have to have a height restriction to deal with?
So, when I went back, I think it was, it was either late nineties or early two thousands, but the discussion was because people were raising their pool decks in their backyards significantly higher than neighboring properties. And the concern, we have drainage rules, so a lot of the drainage, right? The concern, I think, was the, the elevation of people being able to sneak down into the neighboring property.
The thing that Randy brought up earlier.
It, so, it's not the plan of the business.
I know, you're talking about some people with their pool deck, they're flushing the rock out of your house, and some people put the steps, break it down, and it, that, that actually going down looks better all around, against me, but I just wonder, that's not just it on top of the height, just for the, like, your spa or your, let's say you put your, you want the pool at twenty-four inches below or whatever, but what about the guy that wants to put the rock formation, it's, you know, three feet over this corner, a, a, a jumping rock where it's maybe four feet off the, the spa that has steps going up and to get into it?
The spa has a restriction, but other structures on a deck do not.
But like, there's a lot of rock pools now that are built into multi-levels, like you'll have a quarry in one, like that, that would blow up. You couldn't do that with that, that rule is, and I don't see why somebody would object to it.
So would you, would you want an exception built in for some kind of decorative structure?
I don't, I don't, I'd really sit down and really look at code, but I'm just trying to see what was overall, as many variants as we have, what was the, what's the reasoning to even have a, one of the many heights?
Again, like, when I went back and reviewed the minutes and the audio, it was talking about properties that were too high, looking down.
Yeah, that's, that's overall pool deck, I'm just talking about, let's say the pool is built out flush, but then you wanna build a, a, a rock formation around it, what do you wanna do, a, a, what do you call it?
That's auxiliary deck mounted equipment, that would be exempt from the requirement. There's, the, the height restriction is specifically to the pool, not to the features, the pool itself.
I see some pools where they'll put the deep end, it's actually sticking out around four feet, in a stack or?
Well, and, and that, that might, the pool, if the pool itself is raised, that's the concern. But when you're talking about like a rock to jump off of, a diving board or whatever, just wanna be clear on what, on what the provision says. That, that, that's what it says. A secondary thing that I don't think bore out in the minutes that I've seen in other communities when they talk about this is it's a secondary way of addressing waterfall features and their height, and the sound, and the flow, and the, like, things that come with that. I'm not saying that's what happened here, but it, I've seen that as a secondary regulation in a lot of other communities, is to, to prevent the, you, we have this pool, then we have the, the raised hot tub over, and now there's a four-foot waterfall I hear all day long, and those sorts of secondary things. And, and I'm not debating it, I'm just explaining.
Right, if you're trying to answer.
Yeah.
Like, what is, if you're doing a nice pool where you got open water view, you're something like, like on infinity edge.
Right.
And you can't do that with that.
Right. You gotta have much.
You gotta have a boat down to catch it and then circle it back to the pool.
Right.
So eliminates, you didn't, don't, now they did, they make noise, I guess, I don't know. But that, that's, you're kind of limiting how, what you can do, and we're talking about some of these homes that are, if you were a ten million dollar out here, but rebuilt, then, then somebody doesn't wanna be restricted to, to some basic general pool.
So.
What's, what's saying other board members, I mean, what, what are, what's your guys' position on it?
Well, I had a question as to why they changed it from eighteen to twenty-four.
Okay, so the reason we decided on twenty-four is because, again, this has been repeated at Barron's hearings, and I would say eighty and ninety percent of them would have been solved, I just have it at twenty-four versus eighteen.
Okay.
That's, that's what our original question was, why, why is it, is it being completely driven by neighbors, is it, what's it, what's it really?
This was Barron's hearing driven, so Board of Justice being like, why don't we change this to two-four?
Yeah, right, that's now so old time, so.
And, and that's, and, and a lot of, several of the line development code provisions that you're seeing are because of that. And again, that's, philosophically, if you have, variants are supposed to be, as the name suggests, deviation from an exception to the rule. And if every time somebody comes in and says, hey, this rule is a problem, I need an exception, and we're always granting them, then we need to change the rule, the exception is now swallowing the rule.
Okay.
And so what that's, and what, what Mr., Chair Prescott and Kyle are saying is the eighteen to twenty-four would eliminate a lot of administrative costs in the ways of Board of Adjustment hearings and all of that for something that consistently nobody has any problem with. So that's the eighteen to twenty-four inch, whether you guys wish to make that higher or anything else, that's your, that's, that's your discretion. But the, the staff is recommending the six-inch increase as a way of mitigating the need for those kinds of hearings.
My next question was, how many people approach you all for, hired in twenty-four, hired, like, up to thirty?
Uh, in the last three years, we had, I wanna say one case that was over that. But the reason was because the existing pool was already like four feet above the crown of the road, so they asked.
An acquisition.
Yeah.
I was trying to figure out, why do it, why make rules if you gotta create variances, and then you're not giving them to them license, so. But there's enough, you keep giving them, then you set a precedence, or, you know, Scott changed to what I wanted.
So, yeah, I guess, the, the idea of presenting the twenty-four is to handle most of these, but also require a hearing if you have it, if something happens.
It would alleviate, it would eliminate a lot of variances, okay?
Yes.
But if you went to thirty, you would, you don't get too many requests for thirty.
No.
So, I'm like, yes, did you?
I wouldn't do twenty-four. I would do twenty-four, because if you, if you're at, I would, because if you're at thirty, then you may be doing something again to your neighbor's property.
We like twenty-four as well, because the garage is a minimum of twenty-four.
Okay.
And we saw, especially on like Gulf Boulevard, where you have a higher crown, it's difficult for someone to keep their pool, the pool lower than the garage, still maintain a positive flow to Gulf Boulevard, because you can't drain to the back on those lots, because it's not water.
Well, that makes sense.
So that's where we have some problems.
So let's keep it at twenty-four. And if there's, if somebody wants an infinity pool, then that's one, get a variance, and that's one in.
Right.
Yeah.
And if, someone did an infinity pool on Donato that didn't ask for the variance, so certain lots, it's still doable.
That they don't need it, okay.
All right, and then the rest is moved over. You know, we get all of those spas, except there was an addition to the spa section, which is on page forty-nine or section ninety-four dash two ninety by portable spas and inside spas slash therapy pools. Number five, we added such spas shall be plugged in rather than hardwired for electrical services. So we already had, shall not, let's see. So this, the, I thought we had, somewhere in there, oh, spas, so you're, you're, you're set at a volume of, no, not going over six hundred gallons in volume, but to be considered portable, we wanted to add that, you know, it's a situation where you're, you're structured to be unplugged in case you. So, the way our portable spas exist now, if someone could put them right on, say, the corner, back corner of the property next to their neighbors, and their legal was they remain portable. So they would be put on, say, like a paper pad, plugged in, in use, but it's not a permit. Structure can't be moved. That's what currently exists, we just added that, as opposed to, you know, running a wire directly connected to that hot tub, that it has a plug, so making it portable. We just thought that that should be in there.
Would anybody give that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Sure.
Okay. This, I made the note, all floating docks, you know, are gonna require a permit, so we're not gonna have a minimum square foot.
The county requires it too, so it's, you should just have a permit, I said we don't have them all. What we got, I think it's forty-three, I don't remember last time.
Well, I, you had said originally to get them permitted, and I agreed with you, that to get them permitted.
The county allows them to be permitted.
Okay. Construction. This is where we talked about sixty versus twelve, it's just another mention, we want to keep it at twelve, is what the board makes.
What, what?
So that was on page fifty, section ninety-four, two ninety-eight, construction and placement. A, under A, at the very last. It talks about the converging lots.
Which one was there?
Fifty, ninety-four, this very last. And that, that should be, because again, this was moved with that addition, or reduced setback that we do not recommend. And now we get into division five, satellite antennas. And, I believe, Terni Mora, you did some work with this section.
Uh, limited work with satellite antennas, not as much as the telecom towers, which is going to need to be reviewed more carefully. And may require at least one more hearing potentially, just based on, you know, the, the amateur radio, that's Article seven. And that, that may require an additional hearing of this board potentially, in more detailed review, but satellite, I didn't, that, that's, this language largely came from the planner, in division five.
From, this came from chapter eighty-two, planner thought it belonged to chapter ninety-four. That got moved over, and then, Terni Mora is saying, once we get into the article six, telecommunications, towers, and antennas.
Yeah, I, I admittedly have not done the detailed review, just relative to the preemptions. And frankly, in our current federal landscape, ever-changing, nothing has come to this specifically, but I anticipate it will. Generally speaking, when it comes to amateur radio station antenna structures, we are preempted by both federal law and state law on our ability to regulate them. That does not mean we can't have restrictions about where they're placed and how they're located, but for various policy reasons, it is encouraged, if not mandated, that cities allow, or at least attempt to accommodate in good faith, any effort to place an amateur antenna within a residential area. In my firm, we have a collective experience roughly of a hundred and ten years of municipal experience across attorneys. We've had one that's been very controversial, it was here. That is to say, it's not a constant issue, but obviously, when it comes up, no pun intended, it becomes one. That is to say, it's not a constant issue, but obviously, when it comes up, no pun intended, it becomes one, um, so, um, there was an issue in this community about two years ago when I start, three, was it, when I started now, no, two, uh, years ago when I started, um, around an antenna that was here and a lot of disputes, and, and understandable concerns from the neighbors about what is its safety, what is its security, how have we authenticated this, and there's, of course, only so much your city staff can do beyond saying, okay, what do our, what do our codes say about where these things can be, and so, you're able to have some, even if you have location requirements, like, let's say, it can't be X amount of distance from the property line, under the established case law, they can say, yeah, but there's, you know, power lines there, which is why I had to put it over here, we may have to reasonably, um, accommodate that, or at least show why we couldn't. Um, and so, I'd like an opportunity, one more time, to review Article seven in a little more detail, um, frankly, I'm quite impressed by how quickly this board is moving through all of this, um, but, um, and, and I know it's a heavy lift for all of you, so thank you for your attention to detail. Most of this, as I see it, is generally fine, I just want to check it against a lot of the case law that was exchanged between myself and the attorney for that party, to make sure we're still comfortable with these and not creating new, new problems as we try to solve old ones. I'm happy to answer any questions on that, but, um, Broadbush, that's one that we might just wanna revisit, I don't know if we anticipate getting through the rest of this, if not, we can certainly talk about the content there, if anybody had any issues with what's there, they can certainly inform my analysis, you're free to comment on it now. I just wanted to let you know, what I'm, what I'm concerned about is the federal and state preemptions, and the definitely, that's why there's one part where it says amateur radio station antenna structures means, um, under your old code, um, there was a law, there was this extensive debate on what's the tower? Is the tower the physical structure that supports the antenna, and when you look at the federal cases, they kind of mix the two, and once the tower has the antenna on it, then they all become the tower, like Transformers, um, you know, or Voltron, you know, now we're fused and we're still just one robot. Um, and so it's sort of the same, to, 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 you know, colloquially talk about it, and so, the, the highlighting you see there is an incomplete definition because of the need to finesse that issue with what our definition says, and harmonize it with how the case law ends up treating it, which was one of the issues we had. I know that's a lot of lawyer speak on an issue that you probably don't live in that much, but I just wanted to highlight for you where, where the issue is.
So, generally, we had this section, telecommunications, towers and antennas, um, but we're, we're really trying to add a whole nother, more defined about amateur radio station antenna structures.
And, and one of the, and one of the things we wanted to address was, the way that it read, it did not meet the definition of any one thing that we have requirements for. It wasn't quite a structure that could, like a shed, it wasn't quite, uh, uh, house-supporting equipment, it wasn't quite, and so, we, we kept trying to find, when you, when we evaluated how best to regulate this, if at all, within the city, it was a square peg not fitting in any of the round holes. Um, and so we wanna create the square hole a little better, um, and just wanna make sure we, we review that carefully.
Did it survive the hurricanes?
It did, it was down at the time, but it did.
Shoot, of course it did, I don't know. So you're gonna keep reviewing it?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna review that again with a closer eye to it, it's been a little while since I, I really sat in that case law and wanna make sure there's been no substantive updates that might change that analysis.
Yeah, I think what you're understanding, it's really a matter of getting as much code as we can off of them what's allowed.
And one thing that you'll probably see is the addition of, of, uh, some kind of due process element of a hearing to suss it, you know, get, get to those facts, because one of the issues was, we, we just had to say like, well, it doesn't violate any of our rules, county, what say you? And then whatever the county said, we had to be good with, and, you know, there was some consternation over that.
And I don't know, um, when we talk about things like as far as safety, if we could specifically define for amateur radio, that like older rating or some kind of engineering requirement that could be in our code.
Uh, it's certainly something we can put in there, the, the, the concern I have, um, in just putting some of those objective things in, if they are objective, that's fine, it's the, the pressure that it puts on you guys when you're provided an engineering report, or, I mean, you have engineers that you contract with, but just making sure, you know, there's only so much you can authenticate, you're not gonna do a stress win test, um, you know, to authenticate it, and so, we just wanna make sure it's things that you can rely on.
So, two years ago, we had one, what do we have now in the city?
One, it's the same one.
Okay.
I, I think there's probably, that I'm aware of, like, less than half a dozen in the county, um, that are on any kind of residential lot. And the, and the policy reasons for, for encouraging them is apart from hobbyist interests and private property rights, which also factor in, is should existing infrastructure fail, when you have hurricanes and things like that, they can be a means to facilitate communication with, um, with, you know, damaged communities, and so, there's a lot of like, we wanna encourage as much of this, and especially because we have so much reliance on technology that we can't control, if an amateur person's able to control that, we wanna give them that means.
All right, so that gets us up to page fifty-nine and seventy-four, and this is Article eight, solar energy systems, um, and we had nothing, um, in our code for solar energy, so we wanted to add some, some, uh, some language, just, uh, you know, defining where it should be, um, what, what the purpose is, uh, and then what, when it comes to complaint in the city, um, we did, we have had people with panels that where their place, um, the glare, they're, they're kind of, they're, the sun is hitting them, they're directly shining that light into someone's window. Uh, I did find in the Pals County Code, they have, uh, you know, they had this part out of them, uh, highly reflective solar, uh, collection surfaces shall be oriented away from neighboring windows, um, if there is evidence that a glare would be tested directly into a neighboring window, or create a safety concern for vehicles in the street, then use of a non-reflective surface or screening may be required, or as an alternative finish, so this is saying, if it, if it does create some kind of major flare, which is possible at certain times, I think. This is the language to address that. And then the rest is just kind of like general requirements, that wasn't the main purpose of adding a solar section, um, you know, it's obviously important, this might be, ground-mounted solar panels are limited to a maximum height of fourteen feet, you may not even want ground-mounted solar panels, I don't know. This just came from what the county has.
Do we have any underground?
Not currently.
I think just keep it that way.
Yeah, so just take it from.
Just take it out.
Roof line.
Yeah.
Take it out.
Or off the structure, okay.
Ground-mounted solar panels.
Yeah, I could see that being a problem. It might, um, be somewhat addressed by setback requirements, but if it's not something we feel we need, we'd have to move. And then Article nine, development agreements, this, um, some of this wording was in chapter seventy, comparency requirements, um, but this is recommended by a planner as a, a process and procedures if somebody wants to pursue development, um, this lays it all out. And again, this was dated from a, a generally used tablet for, for this purpose, but we did not have, we did not have all this, all this procedure as far as, um, you know, development request, but it is recommended that it happen. So there is a process if this does come, come to the table.
So basically, what you're saying, if someone comes in and there's an open lot in Beller Beach, they have to go abide by all this?
This is like the whole process.
And this came from Fennel's Academy?
No, this, um, I can find out the source, but this is the, just kind of boilerplate language that we should have in our code.
Okay.
Are we talking about four twenty-five, sorry, I just?
Um, section, all of, uh, division.
From sixty on, page sixty on.
But development agreements is especially, is a specific kind of thing, a development, if you're talking about.
This would be like.
Our, our, but Article nine.
Any kind of buy-up.
Yeah, this is where, but a development agreement is entered into between the jurisdiction and the developer, this is not, a developer buys a lot and just develops it on their own and follows the code, this is where people are looking for certain flexibility and working with the city to develop a project, um. Frankly, prudent to have this, especially given your current landscape, but you guys are pretty much exclusively residential, save for the home-based business elements of it, and so, it's not as ownerless a concern as it is, let's say, if you're on the mainland and you're in Seminole, most of their development, all those plazas and things, you see those are development agreements, by way of example.
Okay, so if we don't have that and we're residential, why do we have it?
It's called insurance, um, and, and I don't mean your insurance coverage, I mean, it's very easy to say, we are not that now, and we will never be that, but so many things can happen that we never, never know, and better to have the things there and have the tools in your toolbox, should it ever arise.
If you ever need them, got it, okay.
So, again, um, if, if this ever comes up, you have to review this, or, yeah, insurance for, in case it does.
All right. What's the diagram?
For chapter ninety-four, diagrams in the back, they're, uh, they're studying waterfront lots, sort of similar to what I was.
I got, I got one, they go back to page forty-four, fifty-six, invisible, forty-four, it's, uh, ninety-four, two fifty-six, it starts with B through, uh, E one, two, three, port, portable storage units. And you have the rules and air and so forth.
What is it again, forty-four what? Page forty-four.
Page forty-four, seventy-four.
Mm-hmm.
And it's section two fifty-six.
Portable storage. Okay.
Temporary shelters, and then you got A and B, and B is what I'm talking about, is portable storage units, like a, like a pod.
Right.
Okay, so you got, you're putting rules in, like one says, seven days maximum, you can extend it to twenty-four hours, and I'm in industry, and I can tell you, you don't need to have seven days, ten days, it regulates itself. Nobody wants to pay just to pay to have a container in their driveway, where they're done what they want out there, just as much as anybody else, they're not free, so, um, then if you have, like right now, what we had in a flat, and you got like fifty in the neighborhood, they're gonna be there until they're done with them. You've got people that are gonna do, uh, they do their flooring, it's a big thing, people that do their garage floor, people that do kitchen cabinets, and, you know, big house, maybe three weeks, move the floor job, maybe a month, I mean, it just, it's, that's not practical, say, these will be seven days, so, and then I see where you're gonna wanna put a fee in, and where, where, what we, we ran into, so we're part of every county in the United States, is where you got the fees, is, if, if, it's like, one is rules, one's, I think it's revenue. You don't really wanna mix those two together, but if you wanna get revenue from this, which was ten dollars, I don't know if you guys know how much, but I think, if you wanna go through that, I would set it up to where you're collecting it directly from your resident versus the, the, the industry in pots, if you want.
The resident pays for them.
Right, but that's, that's just, uh, some cities don't have, send a bill to the storage company, and they don't know every city, every rules, they don't, they don't collect it, and, I mean, it, it comes down to maybe we're talking about, with, besides this aberration right now because of the storm, um, storms, is you may have five or six in your cap, in your city at one time, so it's like, we're talking about fifty dollars, and you go through the, you know, the bookkeeping and the collections and all that, you can come up here and buy a ten dollar permit, or whatever you guys decide, but it's, just, it can be what other cities do. But as far as the time limit, some cities do, they feel like eighty-two, but in reality, you're gonna have, you're talking about, you don't want people constantly coming up and asking for permission, permission, that's what you're gonna get, and you're gonna, if you're moving with a storage container, you're, you're gonna, we could, probably all of a sudden, it'll be there anyways, but they're, they're, they put the driveway, they're putting those things in there, and they're, they're gone, they got a closing gate on their house, they're moving out, if it's, and about fifty percent of them are for renovations of some sort, and it's gonna take longer to leave, you know, they're gonna, when you put all your furniture in there, and then they start cutting the, the house, or whatever you're doing to it, you prefer to leave them in the driveway, because when, when we do pick them up, and transport them to a warehouse and back, that's when, if there's gonna be damage, that's what's gonna occur, no matter what, when you lift a thing up, it's, it, it's, they're gonna shift, they move, and that's what they expect, so they, that's why we're, we're, yeah, and then they want, as they, they say, the bedroom's out, they'll go and open it up and take the bedroom set, put it in there, again, as, as they go, instead of having a container re-delivered plenty of times, so I would limit the, I wouldn't have the, the week minimum or maximum, yeah.
I mean, when you talk about remodels, I mean, we could, we could probably tackle that on the permit side, I don't know the reasoning behind the time limit, I'm assuming that's, at the time that they made these limitations, with the monetary guide, like the permit fee, was probably to just create people to commit to a time period to limit, I, I don't know, I'm just.
When we first started this concept, it, it, there was no rules, and then some cities just go, wow, you know, we gotta, we gotta put some regulations on this, but it was so new, it was never done before, so, then a lot of rules came out, and then the cities were all like hot cats, but now, as time's gone by, they're getting, they're just, they're getting rid of, because they'll need them, I said it, right, we've, I've been doing this all over the country, it's, it regulates itself, you know, people go, I'm not, I'm not just having a container shit, I don't pay it for two hundred bucks a month, this would help it, and I wanna get my parking spot back in my driveway, so you don't really need that, because you're gonna, but seven days is not practical. How's the rest of them?
Well, it depends on, on what we, right now, because of.
The storm.
The disaster we've had, uh, some of this needs to be extended.
And the city has waived enforcement, and, and the city has waived that enforcement in the, what we would call blue skies right now, following gray skies.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, historically, where you've seen this, it is largely, a lot of this has to do with aesthetics, and I agree with you that generally, the marketplace and the financial needs, uh, take care of themselves, the unfortunate thing from when you're on the regulatory side of things, as opposed to the operational side of things, is every now and again, it doesn't. And then you get that neighbor who's like, hey, I live in Ohio, I don't need the parking spot, I'm not, I can't rent it out, I'm not renting it out, and so, I'm gonna leave, I'm gonna, hoarder or not hoarder, they just say, I, I can leave it there for any amount of time, I have income-producing properties elsewhere, and they subsidize me keeping it, and then the neighbor says, I thought we can only, we can't have trailers, oh, well, we made it, you know, ninety days, they, and they, you know, or, we don't have a restriction.
I was about to say, um, no, like I said, regulates itself on the, on the monetary side, because people do don't wanna pay for it, they don't need it, they, what they do, or they can't get a thing empty as fast as they can, they stick, but, but they get down to a little bit, they put it in the garage.
Right.
Just like I know the average length, you know, average length of a storage container rental, that doesn't get moved across the country, just, just, you know, local storage, the average occupancy is two and a half months, and that's.
Yeah, and so, I'm saying, my, my advice to you is to still have, my advice to you would be, as your, as your city attorney would be, to have some limit, whether you make it ninety days or two days is of no importance to me, um, I just, I would advise that you have something on the off chance, because anything that is punishable by fine is legal for a price, right? Uh, there's famously, Jeff Bezos has thirty-foot hedges in Beverly Hills, and he pays a thousand-dollar-a-month fine because they are in excess of the hedge limitations, a thousand dollars a day, a month, to Jeffrey Bezos is nothing.
Right.
He'll just have his thirty-foot hedges, um, and so, I just, you know, understand, um, that sort of element.
And this is what, I do that, if that came back as a requirement, cities have done it, they're, they're all going up to a hundred and twenty days, nine to get somewhere in that area, then if you need the reasoning to, 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 then you come in.
Stan.
Yeah. And ask one-by-one basis, but seven is just, is not practical, so ninety days, if you think it's, it's becoming quite, you should eliminate anything being perpetual, but, um, that would definitely make more sense, if like, if we're doing remodels, I think you could put some limits on like six months and nine, nine-day stuff like that, so a lot of times, you're gonna need the tiles and the stuff in the, in the container, you know, while you're, the kitchen cabinets, as they come, you, you buy stuff from out of state, and it shows up with a, you have your freight truck in front of your house, put it in the container until the contractor's ready for it, so, it won't be ninety days.
I think the ninety days, and then you can add ninety if you're still.
I think the ninety days and then you can add ninety if you're still, because like, there are people who haven't gotten all their products yet, like you were saying.
But there's one now, it, it, we're five months into this and they still have theirs. And I'm sure they don't mean to do that, yeah, but it's.
Yeah, well, they're everywhere right now, I'm sure they're what happened, but yeah. They were contracted with one day.
So what's the normal remodel time for like a kitchen? What if we took it down to forty-five days? Is that reasonable?
Real quick though, this is outside of any permits. This is if somebody just wants to have the storage.
This is, this is, this is just.
We build something in orange, not permitted. Because you can have a trailer in the driveway with materials for a permit.
Right, right.
Like I said, the average is, the average is about ninety days.
Well, let's see that.
I will say, I have people calling me eight when there's a storage, on a normal day, not now, but they say that, that there's a storage container that doesn't have a permit on it. I mean, or an RV, people are sensitive to things in driveways.
Since the storm, they're doing that?
No.
Oh, before the storm.
The moment a pod shows up, because your kid's moving to college to Arizona and you're loading it up. If it's dropped on a Tuesday, by Thursday, somebody's calling Kyle to say, hey, this thing's been out here.
All right, so seven days kind of protected the city and all the calls and.
I'm just thinking that there was more truth where they gave it, just because of the way the calls coming in. I could do a little research on them.
Yeah, let's do it.
Yeah, let's do it. I don't wanna say ninety days, forty-five even.
Well, it's better than seven.
I agree. But seven, seven keeps us contained. And let's do more research and talk about it next time.
Okay.
I'm just telling you seven, that's from the industry. All the data I have done work.
Whatever you're doing.
I'm gonna do a little research on what, when, if I can find any, when, when they.
You know, you wanna be fair and, and understanding with some.
Well, I was gonna say, you go, you go, the older, the older.
There's always somebody that is gonna take advantage.
Some are thirty, some are forty-five, some are ninety, some don't have many, but they all start down with seven days, three days, and it didn't work. It just doesn't work. And I'm just telling you from a whole database of those storage containers. There's your research. Washington, New York.
So good.